One, thanks for joining us today. This is Tuesday, December fourteenth, and this is the regular meeting of the Fargo Board of Education. Welcome to our new space. There have been, no doubt, many individuals that have been involved in helping to bring this space to fruition. And hopefully down the road, we're going to be able to have some time to acknowledge those that have been involved in helping us have this space to conduct the business for the public. Hopefully, this is a spot that is, we know it's more advanced technologically wise, and there's more space for the public to be here. So we hope that it provides a good welcoming space for us to do our business. So again, welcome to all of you here today, and so glad that we can be here. I would, I am now calling the meeting to order and asking if there is a motion for approval of the agenda. Jim?
I move approval of the agenda with the addition of the HR addendum that was located at our work location.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Tracy. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, the agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is a report on enrollment projections, memo sixty. We do have a printout of the report here, and we have Rob Schwartz from RSP and Associates joining us this evening virtually for the presentation. I'll turn it over to Dr. Gandhi at this time.
Yeah, good evening, board members. First and foremost, thank you for allowing us to redo the agenda to allow for this report. I do know that Rob, who is joining us virtually, has another commitment as well. So we appreciate that time-sensitive agenda item. On an annual basis, we provide to you our, an analysis report done by Rob's organization, RSP. They do a demographic study and a housing analysis to really talk about and create projections for Fargo Public Schools for a five-year plan that has been provided to you with your board packet. For the purpose of the meeting tonight, we did ask Rob to keep it to ten or fifteen minutes of high-level information. So you can have an opportunity for questions afterwards. We know that this is often a very dense report with a lot of questions, but just wanting to honor the time that board has set for that report. So if there are specific questions, feel free to ask him. But with that being said, I will hand it over to Rob.
Right, good evening. I'm going to share my screen here, and we tested it earlier, and it seemed to work. So we'll see if that continues. Again, it's a pleasure to be able to talk to you. I'm in Troy, Missouri, and they graciously gave me the space to have this meeting before I go into their board meeting. So again, thank you for changing your schedule as well. The key thing that I'm going to want you to take away from this presentation is your enrollment will be increasing. For the benefit of everybody who maybe doesn't know much about RSP, as the superintendent indicated, we've been working with your district for many years, and we only work with school districts, and we work towards providing a high level of planning analysis to help you make good decisions for how you use your buildings, how you staff your buildings and whatnot. So a pretty cool thing that we've been able to do for the last nineteen years. As Dr. Gandhi indicated, we are going to take this at a high level, and this report has a lot of information that you can get into to understand why we're saying what we're saying. So if I go past certain slides, it's not that they're not important. It's more that I want to make sure that I adhere to the time limit and to get some questions from you as board members. So we've broken the report into four categories. There's the baseline enrollment demographics, a section about development, the projections, and things to consider from the information that we've provided. As I indicated, the district is growing. Here on page six, you're able to see where that growth is, at what specific level. And you can see that the elementary is increasing, but we're starting to forecast where there will be decreases at the middle school and high school. I'll talk about that on a couple of slides that make this apparent and why that's happening. We do know that there's a lot of housing that's probably slowed a little bit. And when the diversion is officially in, and I think it's seven years from now that it would officially be in, that's really going to signify a lot of other areas to break loose quicker than what has happened the last couple of years. We'll talk about that, because I think that's important as you try to plan for your future. There's always visuals in our report to give you the perspective of the district boundary. In this case, you can see different city limits that are within or just outside your school district boundary. We have the new feeder system that goes into place for twenty-two, twenty-three, and I heard there's going to be some new boundaries for Bennett and Centennial. I'll come to that when we get to the projections, because that's important when you look at that data. Again, the visual of the existing elementary attendance areas, and then what the secondary attendance areas are, it's getting nice, pretty maps to help you understand where things are geographically. And then twenty-two, twenty-three, the new attendance areas. You know, I'll talk a little more about that when we get to the projections. One of the things we do do is break the district into planning areas, and we have almost six hundred. And so that's a way for us to monitor what's happening with enrollment, demographics, and developments, very key in our ability to accurately forecast what's happening. And there's visuals in this presentation to help you understand that. There's even our statistical formula that we look at, whether it's a built-out area or a developing area. This is the science. This is how we're accurate again with understanding what happens in those five hundred seventy planning areas. One of the things I did want to talk a little bit about is live birth data. You can see the second column. By year, you can see that here in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, we have fewer live births than what we had going back, let's say, to two thousand fourteen or two thousand fifteen and sixteen, where we were over twenty-five hundred, twenty-six hundred live births. That's important. Many people made assumptions during the pandemic that there would be more live births, more babies, and I don't think that's happening anywhere that we do work. The point of this slide is to see that in order for us to maintain a certain number of kindergarteners, what has historically been our market share of live births five years later, knowing that it's not a true apple-to-apple, because kids born in October, November, and December may not be eligible until their sixth year for kindergarten. Elementary by grade, this starts to tell some of the story where we're starting to see the senior classes equalize out and will soon be similar to what we've been seeing for incoming kindergarten classes. So that starts to stabilize enrollment, so that's one part of the enrollment. If we look at that same data on what's happening with cohort change from year to year, we have kind of a mixed tail here of information on what happens. Some grades are decreasing from year to year, other grades see an increase. Generally, the greatest decreases are from ninth to tenth and tenth to eleventh, whereas our greatest increase is from eighth to ninth. So the last couple of years are kind of a difficult challenge to be able to say, here's what's going to happen moving forward into the future, particularly from two years ago, where you can see most grades did see a decrease. Saw that in most every school district we worked with in the Midwest. Migration's important. This is a visual to help you understand how we had students. So the orange or red areas where we've lost students that were receiving services, then coming into this year, they were not here. The black columns, bars, and those indicate those students that were new this year and at what level. We have maps that show where that change is happening, with the dots representing where those new students or students that left the district were. We also are, understand that there's intra-transfers, and so we give you some visuals of how those transfers are moving through the buildings. Some of it based on programming, some of it based on maybe the household of those two addresses, and which is the primary address is dictating what attendance area they would actually be in. Again, you can look at this information to understand the flow of kids in each of the levels. We have maps that help you understand where enrollment has changed. Orange areas being an increase, green areas being a decrease. And you can see from comparing twenty-twenty-one into twenty-one, twenty-two, we've seen a resurgence of enrollments. Again, we were trying to isolate with the enrollments declining the way they did two years ago. How does that impact how we trend the data moving forward? Where we see the students is this heat map, and really cool things to help you understand that past. So we move into the developments. What I wanted you to take from this section is the green line is census population estimates. So we're increasing, it's above zero. So more people are moving into your district, specific to your boundary. And the blue line represents building activity. And you can see we've had some decent building activity, but it's not as much as some years going back to two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, and then our enrollment is kind of oscillated. Really, what we're trying to establish here is what's happening with the population while it's increasing. We're having new building activity, and that's related to, for the most part, most years where we see an increase in enrollment. We do look at those planning areas down to what type of yield rate based on the type of development. And so this gives you some perspective with single-family in each of the existing elementary zones. How many students are we generating? Do the same thing with multifamily units. Again, this is hopefully a way in which you can see when there is a new type of development moving in, how many students do we potentially get from those different types of residential units? We do look at the median home values. So in this map, the orange and red are the least affordable. As we go down to the greens and blues, it's more affordable. So you look at the core part of town, it's definitely more affordable than some of the new emerging developing areas. We look at where product has been built. We've classified this generally as kind of like decades. So you can see how the build-out is definitely moving to the south. And it's just another way of knowing what you already know. We look at where the units are being built, and so the dots are definitely predominantly in the south, around Abey's High School. We look at that year-built distribution by decade. This is kind of interesting information. Take some time and look at that. It gives you some perspective of the existing units versus the new units that came online. And so it shows that there's been quite a bit of building activity over the last twenty years. Ultimately, all the information from our conversations with the city, we create growth areas. And this is very important as we forecast enrollment to understand what I would call subdivision lifecycle. So how these new units come online, how they generate students, all built into our modeling. We break this down into three different maps, the north area, the central area, and then as you go to the south, and as we continue to go south, you can see there's a lot more growth areas with the land that's vacant at this point. I mentioned some things as you look at some of these tables. So the flood diversion project on the lake is just outside your district. All of that's impacting how there will be storm water control. So as those elements come online sooner than seven years, we'll start to see a lot more activity. But as we get closer to seven years, the ability to have the flood diversion project minimize what insurance costs are for flood insurance is going to be huge, and how quickly we see development happen once that diversion project's completed. That gives me some time to get into the projections. So I indicated that we're seeing some enrollment change, specifically overall enrollment growth, and a majority of that is at the elementary level, in fact, all of it's at the elementary level. We're basically at about fifty-two hundred kids. We have you growing to over fifty-seven hundred kids. And if we look at the middle school enrollment, pretty stable, pretty close to what we have in most years currently as we move forward over the next five years. And again, the same similar thing at the high school. As we drill a little bit deeper into the data, like we did last year with our report, we showed the Dakota High School student information, because those students are factored in based on where they reside in each of the high school boundaries. And so when you want to look at the number of kids that ultimately are in the system at those three high schools, we have to factor in that these Dakota High School students need to be pulled out. And just kind of an information point there. We look at projections. One of the things when we met with administration is I think there's going to be a new attendance area for Bennett and Centennial. And so I just kind of looked at this. Right now, we show in twenty-three, twenty-four, Bennett becomes over their six-eighty-two capacity. When I look at the boundary change that's being discussed or will be proposed and voted on, what this will mean is the boundary will get us out to twenty-five, twenty-six before we start having capacity issues at either Bennett or Centennial. So that's some good news. We have, we see orange, we typically are saying there's a challenge with how that programming may work in those buildings. So as you look down through each of the other elementary buildings on this page, no orange being shown. So under the utilization for that building. And the same thing as I go to page two with the second part of the alphabet of elementary buildings, everything looks pretty solid as far as not being overutilized. We get into the secondary. We have, I think what's important is what the high schools can handle is managing what size or number of kids that we have in any of these middle school buildings to try to have this nice feeder that works well into those high schools. So Ben Franklin is slightly over their capacity, but they likely can be accommodated in that building. And then you can see at North High, we start to get over capacity. But one of the things that we spoke about with administration is that with the phasing of things that are occurring with moving the students with the secondary change, we should focus on the attend line, so that third row for each of the buildings. And so North High should be fine with the changes that have been put into place for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Another quick thing on this page that I wanted to make sure you understood, because there's a lot of data. We have each of the buildings, we have the target enrollments for that building. And then for the past enrollments, we show the enrollment three ways. So the middle row, green font, is always going to be where the student resides in relation to the attendance area. The blue, third row, attend, is the students based on the coding in the student database where they actually attended. The top row, purple font, is a subset of the reside. It's where they resided and actually attended. So this starts to show you some of the choices that may be happening with programming, transfers, all of the different things that make it more flexible for the students and the parents. We also give a projection by grade for reside. This helps administration with their staffing. We do the same thing with attends. Again, just to make sure that you can staff those buildings sooner than later. This gets us to next steps and opens up for questions. I think always monitoring the developments. I know there's been a lot of delays with the diversion project, but everything there is moving forward. We know there's a lot of conversation with some of that land that's on the south side. And so I think over the next few years, we're going to start seeing little projects start to pop up. We'll start seeing the infrastructure put in place, gearing up for when we finally don't have that flood insurance issue. So again, want to monitor what happens with the kindergarten roundups and what happens with some of the development trends to be able to see if we're still tracking the way we're forecasting the enrollment projections will be for the next five years. With that, speaking of that, go ahead, and if there's questions, comments, if I can answer them this evening, I will. If not, I'll get back with the district on an appropriate answer.
Thank you, Rob. Always valuable information. Board members, questions? Any questions? We have two board members that are not here right now. Brian Nelson was not able to join us this evening, and Nikki Gulickson is planning to join us later. Just wanted to make sure everyone knew that. Any questions? Why, I don't see any hands up, Rob. You must have, you've done a fantastic job of walking us through the very detailed information in front of us. I'm always impressed, and it seems like every time we receive this information, it's more and more detailed and just thought up in an improved manner. Appreciate seeing the formula or formulas that are put together that gets us to this information, and it's going to be so valuable as we move forward with the crucial conversations that we are going to have. So good to see that we have some growth coming as well.
Sure.
And we can work on planning for that. So, okay, again, one last time, any questions? If not, we know you have other work you need to get to this evening.
All right, thank you for your time, and I can't wait to see your new place in person. It looks really nebulous.
It's great, and we'll get questions to you if we have them down the road. Thanks again, and have a great night.
You too. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, we will transition then to the recognition of the audience portion of our meeting. And there are five folks that have signed up to speak with us this evening. And so I'll read the comments that need to be read ahead of time. At this time, the board will hear comments from the public. We ask that each speaker who has assigned up to, who has signed up to address the board, state their name and home school district for the record. Speakers must refrain from using this forum to criticize or complain about a specific employee or student by name. Vulgar or profane language will not be tolerated. The board is interested in your comments and will listen carefully, but is not obligated to respond or debate issues in this forum. Should you desire a written response to a specific question, you may request it. This evening, each speaker will be allotted a maximum of four minutes. Upon conclusion of the allotted time, a chime will sound, and the speaker will be asked to conclude. If necessary, a final chime will sound fifteen seconds later, signifying the end of your time at the podium. You'll notice too, if you've been here to speak with us before, and now in our new space, we have, there's a little bit of an indicator up at the podium. I think there's a red light, green light, yellow light, maybe. And so that will hopefully help you to gauge where you are with your speaking time. So just wanted to mention that. So any rate, the first person that has signed up to speak with us is Stephanie, and I'm not quite sure of the last name. So if you'd like to make sure that we have that, so you pronounce it correctly for us, that would be great. Thank you, Stephanie.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Manasis, and I live in this school district right here. I wanted to talk about possibly having mobile units down the road for vaccines in the schools. I'm quite concerned. I used to work in the pharmaceutical industry in marketing, and I used to write the materials that would go to doctors. And there is a lot of deception and manipulation that happens in the pharmaceutical industry. So far to date, there have been more deaths with the COVID vaccine than all the vaccines combined since they've been tracking since nineteen ninety, which is on VAERS. VAERS stands for a Vaccine Adverse Event Recording System. It's a government agency that tracks deaths and adverse events with vaccines. The clinical trials for children will not be done until twenty-twenty-four, so I don't know why schools are rushing to have mobile units come into the schools to do vaccines. I'm quite concerned about that process. And that's all I have to say for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Krista Williams is the next person.
Hi, I'm Krista Williams. I'm a parent of multiple children of Fargo Public Schools. On the guest speaker, I did have a question. I hear a lot, like I understand we're growing south, but I am an advocate, because I feel like North Fargo is being overpopulated, overcrowded. And I don't know if there are any options, or if that's something you're looking into expanding. There is only one high school and only one middle school. That wasn't part of my planned speech, I just wanted to address that. I have a lot of questions moving into second semester, and I hope that I don't overstep boundaries or offend anybody today, because that's not what I had intended. I just have some sanity questions. These questions, I do request formal reading, formal response from individuals, not just one group response. Not sure if you're taking notes of the questions, I have several questions. My first question is why we didn't start today's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance? My second question, I'd like to address everybody at this meeting. I want to know what you think makes a good leader, because I believe everybody at this table before me should be a good leader. Third question, what do you feel your duties and responsibilities are? My last question? This is tough, sorry. What part of being on the board entitles you to how, this is just how I feel? I have some personal opinions, it's a little awkward. I'm personally insulted in the conflict of interest happening. Some people's opinions should not mandate me and my children's choices, medical decisions. However, I do want to thank Jennifer for being a leader, never giving up when being bullied and harassed. Thank you for staying strong. And then I do have a question for Mr. Girlsangandi. Having children with IEP, why is it the only time that I get attention to my problems is when I call you personally? I also want to know why Fargo Public School preaches anti-bullying, but when it happens, it's coded normal? I would request these responses before Christmas break, so I can make a decision for second semester. I really do, I mean, want to thank you for the time and the consideration, and I hope that you know that all these questions come from a concerned parent and from heart and not the anger. I just really don't know who to trust or where to turn. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person to sign up to speak is Cassie Schmidt.
Can't get close enough, the belly's in the way. Hi, this is Cassie Schmidt with Let Parents Decide That. We have grown to over two thousand members, and I have a couple of concerns to share from our members. So first of all, in regards to the last meeting, we have heard time and time again from different members that we're not to compare districts. We're not supposed to compare Fargo to West Fargo. Rebecca, I'm sorry, but last, the last meeting, you compared Fargo, not to West Fargo, but to Shakopee, Minnesota. And that's two hundred and forty-five miles away with a completely different demographic that cannot be compared to Fargo. So that's a little frustrating for a lot of parents. I would like a written response as to how the Shakopee, Minnesota, school district relates to the Fargo, North Dakota, school district, and why we should look at Shakopee instead of West Fargo, excuse me, when West Fargo is literally just separating us by a road. So we have, we have scientists that are actually studying the data from West Fargo versus Fargo that are relating that data to the CDC and trying to get some national attention between Fargo and West Fargo. So if you guys weren't aware of that, now you do know. In response to these mobile units that we have been made aware of, will be coming to different Fargo Public Schools across the city. We already have dates set for elementary schools. I would like to remind the board that these products are under emergency use authorization for ages five to fifteen. I don't understand the legality of, sorry, this is so far away. I don't understand the legality of allowing a child into a mobile unit with nothing but a signed consent form when there has been zero vetting of these consent forms. I have reached out to the district office, and I've also reached out to family healthcare, and neither entity is going to be making sure that the signatures on these forms are actually parents or that the parents that are signing the forms have the legal authority to do so. We have parents that have two separate, separate views in their separate views in their household. And what happens if one parent does not consent and the other parent does? I'll tell you what happens because I called and asked. If you're if there's a signature, there's a shot. And that's scary because we do not have long-term safety studies on these products, and we cannot be putting our children at risk when we're not even doing our due diligence to make sure, again, that these signatures are valid. This kid could, he could sign Mickey Mouse on his on his form if he wanted to, and no one is checking until after the fact. And that's not okay. We have technology. We have all kinds of stuff. You guys could be making sure that these are checked a little bit better. I also want to make aware, we had a speaker up here that was talking about VAERS data. We've already, up until December third, there have been a total so far of sixty-one VAERS cases reported for children under the ages of eighteen in North Dakota alone, just six sixty-one North Dakota-specific cases relating to children. And one of those cases was a twelve-year-old child that received an entire vial of the COVID nineteen vaccine. You guys, this is scary. An entire vial. One-sixth of the vial is what the actual dosage is supposed to be. Now, this happened in a full-blown medical facility. What's going to happen in a van parked outside of the schools? We need to stop these mobile units. We need to be making sure that healthcare facilities handle health and schools handle education. Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa Watson-Bacher.
Hi, my name is Alyssa, and my children attend Fargo Public Schools. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. Throughout my comments, I'm going to be asking a number of questions, and I would request a formal response to each of them. It has been made public that Dr. Newman, who is the Health Officer for Fargo-Cass Public Health, is the one making the masking recommendations for Fargo Public Schools. When Dr. Gandhi references meeting with someone from Fargo-Cass Public Health, he is in fact talking about Dr. Newman. How is that you, as a board, do not find any issue with the fact that she is creating the recommendations then voting on them as a board member? She's being paid six thousand sixty-six dollars per month from the city for her work as a Health Officer for Fargo-Cass Public Health. And she is also being paid as a school board member. How is this not a conflict of interest? I understand the board lets her decide whether she feels like there is a conflict of interest. However, when she is being paid a large sum of money to give her recommendations, it's impossible to remain unbiased. This is a scenario when the board needs to step in and take the matter out of her hands. The board is allowing another member to not only influence policy but both create it, then vote on it. I request the board vote immediately to have Dr. Newman recuse herself from any vote pertaining to Fargo-Cass Public Health recommendations. It's long overdue that she be more transparent about her connection with the Fargo-Cass Public Health and the role she has played with the forced masking of our children. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Yes, hi, I am Sheri Furco. I have a son at Davies High School. I find this hard because there are people on this board that I know and that has been that treated my son as a physician for many years, and I trusted this person and a friend that also was a part of activities in elementary. But I feel like you have to say something. It's important that we speak. And I guess what I want to know is what do you really know about the COVID vaccines? What I've found out is that it's gene therapy. Gene therapy is not a vaccine. It takes decades, at least, for it to become a vaccine. And that has come from Dr. Malone, a very well, highly recommend, very well respected in his field. And also, what about the effectiveness? We've already heard from some of our parents saying the VARs are are very high. Why are we continuing to push a vaccine, or I guess we should really call it an injection because it's not a vaccine? It's an emergency use authorization injection that we are putting into our children. We are using them as experimental human beings treated like animals. I I just don't see how we can even find in our hearts that we can do such a thing. And then also with bringing in mobile units into our schools that is saying, we're going to make it easier and convenient for you to give a vaccine to your child. That isn't even a vaccine. That isn't even effective. That isn't even safe. Do you know that the Pfizer and there's probably, you know, the other companies besides Pfizer was found out that they had fraud and bribery in two thousand and eleven? And they were they were forced to to pay one percent of their annual proceeds or profits, over two point three billion dollars because of bribery, because of lying, because that they find that their profits are more important than the safety and effectiveness of their products they're giving out to people. And we want to give these to our children. We want to give a Pfizer product to our children when they have been they have been shown that they have been bribing and to to our government and showing that they they have a civil and criminal case that has shown them that they are they are pushing a product that is that they are not even behind, their product isn't even showing that it is I'm sorry, I'm I'm falling behind here. I'm it's it's very just it just takes my breath away that we are doing this to our children. And I just want you to think about that.
Thanks, everyone, for being here. That concludes the recognition of audience portion of the agenda. We're going to move on. Oh, I did not have my mic on. What a shame, right? Thanks, sorry. Thanks, everyone, for joining us for the recognition of audience portion on the agenda. The reports items that we have first, we have a report from the FEA, and Grant Kraft is here, so welcome, Grant.
Well, thank you. I've been working on my master's degree, so Tuesday evenings are synchronous class time with Zoom, so I haven't made it to many board meetings lately, and probably this will be the only one until September of twenty twenty-two. So a little journey ahead of me personally. But thank you for for allowing us to deliver an FEA report every time you you meet. As Rebecca said, you all likely know that my name is Grant Kraft, and as an FEA member, I'm here to provide tonight's FEA report. In addition to knowing my name, you probably but may not also know that I'm a Latin teacher at Carl Benilson Middle School and Fargo South High School. Just last week on Tuesday, my classes were discussing a quote by the Roman poet Juvenal, mens sana in corporis sano, literally meaning a healthy mind in a healthy body. And we talked really openly as a class about the growing awareness of the mental health needs that our society is recognizing, and how based on this quote, the Romans seem to have had an understanding that overall health was not just about physical fitness, but mental acuity as well. It was interesting when I went home Tuesday after that lesson to find that the U.S. Surgeon General had issued a fifty-three-page advisory on the youth mental health crisis, which has been further exposed by the COVID nineteen pandemic. Sometimes I and perhaps you prefer to think that national advisories like this are not really consistent with the experiences of the youth where we live. Unfortunately, tonight, I'm here to affirm from my own experiences and those relayed to me by many other classroom teachers that, in fact, the Surgeon General's advisory is absolutely applicable to our school system. So I'd like to take a moment, if I can, to highlight a few of the Surgeon General's recommendations, but to also note his big takeaway, which is that supporting the mental health of children and youth will require a whole of society effort. And I think that's really important. If any students were to happen to tune into a school board meeting on a Tuesday evening, I would want them to know these things that the Surgeon General has also recommended. First, know that mental health challenges are common and treatable. Secondly, know that you're not alone. Seek out a trusted adult when life feels hard. And third, in recommendation of the Surgeon General, in my recommendation, and probably many parents' recommendations, replace some social media use with some face-to-face time with family and friends. I think we all would benefit from that this time of year. Secondly, to any parents or caregivers who might be listening, the recommendations that stood out to me included helping your youth developing strong and safe and stable relationships with you and other supportive adults such as coaches and faith leaders. To encourage your youth to build up healthy and social relationships with peers. And to do your best to provide a predictable daily schedule, such as routine dinnertimes and bedtimes. Additionally, though, to provide that whole of society effort, the Surgeon General makes many recommendations, as you can imagine, over the course of fifty-three pages. And it's pretty wide-ranging to community organizations and to funders of foundations, to healthcare organizations, and media companies, and entertainment, and social media, and the list goes on. I would encourage anybody who's listening again, who's in a position of leadership, including all of you, people who desire to help strengthen students and our future leaders, to read and work to implement the Surgeon General's recommendations. One of the groups that that makes recommendations is schools, and I'm pleased to think reflectively about what Fargo Public Schools has been doing. We're already implementing some of the items that the Surgeon General recently recommended. Things including creating a positive and safe and affirming school environment for all students and implementing social and emotional learning programs. And we're even providing staff and some of those additional recommendations, such as providing them with trauma training or providing access for employees and their families to seek out mental health care. These are important things, and we should be proud of these things that our district has implemented. But we also must not rest on our laurels. We should work more fully to support all the mental health needs of our students and staff. There was a recent board meeting at which one of the board members asked the FEA representative for specific things that can be done to help teachers and students in our district as we continue the difficult work ahead of us. And I thought really critically on that. What does the board have the authority to do? What is in the range of the board's ability? And so tonight, I've come prepared on behalf of FEA with a few recommendations for motions that could be passed that would bring additional support to students and the staff working most closely with them. Number one, I encourage board members to make a motion to direct administration to use ESER funding to expand school-based mental health workforce by reducing the student-to-counselor ratio by at least twenty percent. While teachers work hard to connect with each student in their class, at the end of the day, most teachers are not trained counselors, psychologists, or therapists. In our secondary schools, for example, there are currently between two and three hundred students assigned to a single counselor. I believe that we can do better than that. And using federal funding now to reduce the caseloads would be a first step towards building a healthier future. Additionally, I think we must look for ways to significantly improve upon the current social-emotional learning program, which asks teachers to present information and hold class discussions on some sensitive topics without any preparation. Therefore, I encourage the board to make a motion directing administration to investigate and report to the board at the next meeting regarding the feasibility of implementing a full day of social-emotional learning lessons once per week serviced by community partners. This would provide students important learning opportunities outside of the academic curriculum while simultaneously supporting teachers with needed time for engaging, create creating engaging lessons, connecting with parents and students, collaborating with fellow educators, and maybe even providing academic intervention to select students. Thirdly, the Surgeon General recommends that employers consider additional employee benefits in addition to paid family leave and sick leave. FEA has and will continue to strongly support any motion to reinstate a COVID leave bank. ESER funding could be used to prevent the district from facing any kind of financial setback from doing this. A motion should be made and passed tonight that any employee who tests positive for COVID shall not have leave deducted from any of their individual leave balances. This is a simple way to demonstrate support of educators and to ensure that they will in no way lose out on any benefits such as the sick leave buyback program due to working a frontline job during a pandemic. I think this is especially relevant as we think about the rise of the Omicron variant and the decision to make masks optional beginning semester two. And lastly, additionally, and separate from the Surgeon General's report, in light of recent events in this and neighboring districts, FEA calls on members of the Board of Education to make and pass a motion requiring quarterly training for students and staff on procedures to enact in an internal threat or lockdown. We all hope such a tragedy will never strike our community. Yet it's necessary in today's world that all students and staff know the plan and are prepared to implement it. So thank you for allowing me some time to return to the podium in the boardroom and to share some of what's been on my mind lately. I I think together we can continue to strengthen our students while also supporting our staff and ultimately provide an ability for all students and staff to achieve mens sana in corporis sano. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Grant. And good luck with your studies. Dr. Gandhi, let's go on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, board members. First, and I wasn't going to, you know, address mental health, but thank you to Mr. Kraft for speaking on behalf of FEA and talking about that. Earlier today, I had an opportunity to visit with a just an inspiring group of young individuals. They're students from Fargo North that have started a student community group called Mental Health Matters. And they had reached out to me to create an FPS Learns video that actually, as of, I think, twenty minutes before this board meeting, is available on our YouTube video, but it will be advertised in upcoming journeys and and other avenues with our communications team just to have a roundtable discussion around mental health, to talk about the continuum of services that we're offering as a school district, and what else? What else can be done? And what else can be done as well? So I appreciate Mr. Kraft's recommendations and and the conversation because I do think that we, along with several other school districts, we are on a continuum of services. You received a report by Jen Sar of what we are doing. There's gaps that we will continue to address in our district, and it is a priority for us as well. Specific to the FEA recommendations, I I do want to just share with you some of the things that we are doing with with ESER funds or or some of the conversations we've had. Decreasing the ratio of school counselors to students has been a priority for for the district for some time, not only for school counselors but for school psychologists. For those of you that have looked at any of our legislative lobbying work, you have seen that for the past two years, specifically addressing school counselors and school psychologists and the ratio has been something the district has focused on because unfortunately, those are positions that we're unable to fill. But we are, we are talking and looking at how we can use ESER funds to maybe create more of our internal pipeline for current educators that might be classroom teachers wanting to pursue school counseling licensure. That's something that we're looking at. We are looking at using other things, but those are things that we want to do. We are looking at using other things, but those are things that we want to do. Also, just to let you know that legislatively, we need to reduce the ratio. Legislation was passed during this last legislative session to have a dictated ratio for elementary and secondary school counselors to students, and that's something the district wants to do. So for us, it's unfortunately not a funding thing. We do need to figure out how we can recruit some of those individuals. These are some positions that we've had posted for long times, and sometimes the duration of a year specifically when we're talking about school psychologists. But those are great recommendations and things that we want to look at as well. I did want to just spend some time today on our, my superintendent report, just letting board members and community members and staff know as well that we are going to have our annual State of the Schools and Public Focus Group on Thursday, January 13th at South High School. Sign up for that is, I believe, this Friday is the deadline, and people can sign up online, but if you can encourage anyone to participate. We are about five years into our strategic plan that was last comprehensively created in 2014. We do annual updates. It is time for us to give it a new facelift, or renew the plan, is the words that we're using at the district. That means that the strategic initiatives may not change, but the actual items that we use, what we want to see and be able to do as a district, and how we measure our progress, will. And that's going to be through a research-based process, but this focus group will be the first opportunity to collect some of that feedback from our community on what we want to do for our strategic plan. I also wanted to share briefly today, I'm not sure if some of you have the opportunity to see Doug, talk a little bit with some of our media partners around the substitute crisis that is not just relevant in Fargo Public Schools, but across the nation as well. Administration, along with the board, we want to do what we can to encourage more substitutes, it's something that we see a significant shortage of. Our teaching staff is directly feeling the impact of that. We have more teachers taking on, giving up their planning periods to take on substitute roles, take on more of that, because they don't want students to be in unfilled classrooms, and that's something that we're seeing across our system. And I just wanted you to share that today to first uplift our teachers as they go into the holiday break, knowing that the amount of work, and additional work that they've done this year, but just because of the significant shortages that you're seeing across many industries for personnel, but directly impacting schools, all across the nation, but us significantly as well. And it's primarily, you know, we've always had some areas that have been shortages, but substitutes are more than we've had before. And the brunt of that goes on to the individuals that decide to step into a classroom at that time, and that's our teachers and our administrators that are doing that consistently. So I wanted to acknowledge their work, because it has been pretty significant. And then I think the last piece is, thank you, Board President Rebecca, for just mentioning the new boardroom and the amount of work that went in there. Like any new building, we are a work in progress, so there's signage throughout the building that are still coming. There's pieces of AV that we will learn and grow together as we kind of figure out how the new building works, but that's just kind of part of the process of moving into a new building and working with the new space. So I'm very grateful for all of our staff that have worked tremendously hard. You know, they've encountered challenges because of COVID that really aren't in their control, whether it's supply chain issues, or labor shortages, or contractors not being able to do some of the work. But I'm glad that we're able to meet in person in our new space today, knowing that we'll have some kinks to work out along the way.
Thank you, Dr. Gandhi. Does anyone have any questions directly related to his report, the items that he shared? Okay. If we could take a five-minute break and be back here at about 6:30, that would be great. We'll start the business, or excuse me, then we'll go to consent. We'll resume our meeting now. It's just, it says 6:32 on the clock. Is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda? Jim?
So moved, with the addition of the HR addendum.
Okay, with the addition of the HR addendum, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Seth. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Consent agenda is approved. Onto the business section, attendance boundaries implementation plan memo 65 comes from the Planning Committee, Jim Johnson. Would you like to introduce this memo, please?
I sure will. As I'm sure you all recall, at a previous board meeting, we directed the administration to develop an implementation plan for the boundary adjustment between Bennett Elementary and Centennial Elementary. What you have before you in memo 65 is their recommendation, and in particular on page four, if you go back into page four, you'll see what they're recommending is that any current student that is enrolled at Bennett Elementary would have the right to stay there through fifth grade before they go on to middle school. They're not required to stay there. They certainly could shift over to Centennial. But they're certainly grandfathered or grandchild, I don't know if it's grandfathered for an elementary student, if they want to stay in their current building. That does not apply to the entire family. That's strictly for the students that are currently enrolled at Bennett Elementary. The other part of the plan that is worth noting is it is the district's intention to, at least for the next three years, continue to provide transportation from the affected neighborhood to both Centennial and to Bennett Elementary. And then when we get finally to 2025, 2026, we'll look to see how many students are still in that area that have elected to stay at Bennett and make a determination at that point in time if it makes sense to continue a bus route or to find a different solution for those students at that point in time. So that is the recommendation that's coming from the administration on the implementation plan. And to get discussion going, I'll make a motion that we approve the attached boundary change implementation plan and direct administration to proceed with implementation for the 2022-2023 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newman. Okay, Jim, back to you, in case you have anything else to add at this point?
Nothing more to add. I appreciate the administration working to put it together and finding a way to grandfather the current students.
Any board members have questions? Nikki?
No question, but a word of thanks for allowing grandfathering, at least for the current students that are in place.
Appreciate that consideration. Jennifer?
Thank you. I would just mention, and as I did in planning, one of my concerns was really that, you know, we're right around the time where we need to update our tenure plan. And as we've seen with RSP, there are going to most likely be some additional things that we'll have to talk about here in the future in terms of that particular area. And so I would have liked to have seen this provide more than just a three-year sort of Band-Aid approach. I would have liked to, for it to have been part of that larger discussion, especially because I think that is coming up, you know, real soon. So for that reason, I'm not going to support this initial recommendation.
Comments from any other board members? I too am happy that we are able to figure out grandfathering doesn't probably change things as quickly as, well, it wouldn't. It wouldn't change things as quickly as if we wouldn't have grandfathered, but taken into consideration the feedback from some of the families to be able to do that and realize that it's okay, we didn't have to have as immediate of an impact, rather than not grandfathering. Also, I'm supporting this because additionally, this does help us address some of the exact points that Rob brought up in his presentation today. He mentioned that specifically when he talked about elementary school population growth. So any, if there aren't any other comments or discussion questions, I will have Ann-Marie call the roll. Benson?
No.
Gullikson?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
President Knudsen? Yes, motion passes. The next item is an SRO Joint Powers Agreement, memo 66. And that comes to us from Tara Bradner, our General Counsel. Jim, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education approve the joint powers agreement between the district and the city of Fargo for school resource officer program pursuant to North Dakota Century Code 15 dot 1 dash 19 dash 14, subparagraph 1.
Is there a second? Okay, a second by Seth. Jim, back to you.
Well, I'll actually turn it over to Tara, because it's her memo. I just wanted to get a motion for discussion.
Go ahead, Tara.
Yeah, I would just say if there are any questions on the joint powers agreement, I'm happy to answer them. Essentially, what you have in front of you, as Jim stated, is the agreement between the district and the city of Fargo to provide school resource officers to our buildings. Pursuant to state law, the district has the authority to designate a law enforcement entity or to provide for those services through another entity. So essentially, what we're doing in this joint powers agreement is it's, we're agreeing with the Fargo Police Department to have those resources provided by them. This document has been reviewed by the Attorney General's Office, the city of Fargo attorney, and it's, once it's approved by this board, if it's approved by this board, it will move forward for the approval by the city of Fargo and then the Attorney General's Office.
Thank you, Tara. Robin?
I will be supporting this motion. I am a fan of the SRO program. I think it is, as the Chair of the Batches of Unity Police Department Advisory Board, it's a very proactive approach to build relationships. They are also victim to staff shortages, so we will see, we are experiencing some movement with our SRO appointments within schools. But I am a big fan of this, and the preventative proactive relationships that are built with our students and staff help our students succeed and have great futures. Thank you.
Seth?
I don't see any reason why I wouldn't support this either. I just wanted just a quick point of clarification when reading it and saying that in the past, this designation has occurred through a memorandum of standing. Is there anything different within it? It's just the structure by which we have to agree or make the agreement? Because of state law, is that kind of what the deal is?
That's a great question. So the primary changes in the agreement that you have before you is related to liability. Both entities in this respect are just saying that they will be liable for their own actions as required under state law. And then there were some minor tweaks to the confidentiality language with regard to what law enforcement can pass on to people who aren't operating in a school resource position. Other than that, it's really more of a structure change just because two public entities are sharing their statutory authority.
Okay, that's kind of what I figured. Thanks.
David?
Tara, what, how was the liability issue handled before, when it was an MOU?
So the previous language in the MOU said that the parties would be liable. They would indemnify each other. So we've just essentially updated this to say, instead of providing indemnification, we are both just going to be responsible for our own actions, which is typical state or language that's in these agreements. And it's language that has been drafted by the Attorney General's Office and put forward for political subdivisions to use in contracts.
Jennifer?
Thank you. I too, I just have some clarifying questions. I too support the program, but I do, I am interested if maybe Jackie or whomever could answer the question in terms of, have we, how much has this increased from last year to this year in terms of how much of the budget is dedicated to cost? Have we, because we've grown this program, correct, in the last year?
I'll let Jackie speak to maybe the difference between the past MOU and this JPA in terms of cost. One of the things that happened in the discussion was that the practice of the cost wasn't worded accurately in the previous MOU. And it was, the practice was what was intended to be, but it just wasn't clear in terms of who was providing the difference for increases for cost of living raises for the SROs along with some of the benefits. So I know that we clarified that language. In terms of growing the program, I know, I, and I have to look at Jackie because we haven't SRO'd all of our secondary buildings. I wasn't here at the time of the last thing. So I don't know if we've added a secondary building since then. And so I'm getting heads or no, because I know Davies came online in 2011, so.
Any additional questions?
So, cost? No, I would like to know the difference. And in terms of, like, would that be to you, Jackie? I would assume that would be you, budget question. And then in terms of not growing in numbers, but we grew in hours that we contract, or no? Because we have an SRO now here, so I'm just assuming, like, we talked about, or governance did, about that decision. That's growing the number of hours, so I would assume that's different than in terms of cost.
Jackie, do you have any details on that or prepared for that?
I would only have information really on the costs, which this is, I don't believe there's an increase in service for this, but the increase in cost really is due to our old MOU that we had, had no inflators in it. So as the police department gave raises to staff every year, that was, they always ate that difference then. And so the new contract just puts in the wording that says, you know, just in effect, we will share the cost 50/50, whatever that cost may be for those staff.
Any other questions? Dr. Gandhi, point of clarification?
And I would just, to further capitalize on what Jackie was saying, it's just, direct board members to the last page of the memo, which is page 10, the appendix B. It does have a breakdown of what the cost is. And you'll see it's by salary for the amount of SROs. It's not by hours of service along with benefits and then uniform and equipment and things of other nature. So you'll see the full cost breakdown at that point.
For this year, not last year. I was just looking for the difference. And so I understand that there's a difference in how we're.
It's about a $60,000 difference. It'll be an increase.
And that all is because of the old agreement, the change in how we are?
As far as, were there increases in services?
Yes. So the only change with relation to increases in services is the addition of the SRO sergeant. So Sergeant Jacobson.
So the number of SROs in your suite?
If you would like to go to the podium, thank you.
So we still have seven SROs, one at every middle school and high school in the Dakota. However, in the past, you've never had paid into my role as an SRO. And so this is also the first time you've had a supervisor of the SRO program that was formally and trained up as an SRO as well. And so as a result of the additional services that I provide, predominantly being the liaison to all of the elementary schools, to your facility, the district office, and of course, your board. The district office was very generous in being willing to compensate the department for half of my salary. So that's that addition. So you technically only have seven SROs, but then you have my role as the supervisor and overseer of the program. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, are we ready to vote? David, did you have any questions? Does anyone else have any questions? David?
I'm trying to figure this out. It's costing us more simply because of the fact that she's attending all of our board meetings too, correct?
Somewhat more. Dr. Gandhi?
The decision to have a supervisor at the board meeting made by governance was recent. Her primary role has been the increased usage as the liaison to all of the elementary schools and being used in those situations. Right now, Sergeant Jacobson is the person that is called anytime that there is an elementary situation that requires law enforcement along with the supervision piece of the SRO. So this might be one component of her portfolio. From an operational standpoint, the primary usage of her portfolio is both through the SRO supervision piece. She meets with both Bob and Missy, I believe, once a month to talk about the SRO program, what's happening at the buildings, and then being a direct support at our elementary buildings, which I know she gets pulled in all 14 directions at times as well. So that's the primary function of that portfolio.
David?
And I have no, I am very, very happy with the job you're doing. And I think it's great that we have a supervisor. It just, it seems to me like a very unnecessary expenditure of funds to have her in attendance at all of our school board meetings. And I'm not going to vote against it because of that, but I'm not, I'm not in favor of the increase in the budget to cover her having to be here.
Robin?
I would say the increase of $60,000 is not solely due to her attending board meetings. It is riding the costs of who has the cost share. I don't anticipate there is any additional charge having her attend board meetings and certainly not to the tune of $60,000. So I do not want it understood by the public that the board is paying $60,000 to have an officer at our board meetings, because that is truly not the case.
Exactly. And the purpose really of this memo is to get us to an agreement. So previously, an MOU, now joint powers agreement that is a legal document that exists, that will exist between the two parties so that we can continue to operate in a way that is most appropriate based on Century Code and the AG's office. So it's very important that we have this document in place. Jennifer, or excuse me, Robin?
I would add that Chief Zabolski has restructured several of his committees. And I know very strongly that, or I know for a fact that he has restructured the community policing department, since I serve, I chair that board. This is also partially a function of the change in her responsibilities. And essentially, Sergeant Jacobson has been promoted due to her good work. So thank you again, Sergeant Jacobson, for your work.
Jennifer?
Thank you. So in thinking about some of the things that have been said, and I mentioned this in the beginning, I don't have a problem, and I actually appreciate that it is moved from an MOU to more of a legal document and agreement and that we are aligned then for those liabilities that we are supposed to be responsible for. So I do support that. But I do think that this isn't about necessarily just the dollars in terms of what we're allocating them for, because clearly you've already identified all of the things that the officer does for that position and that we are, I agree with all of those statements. But what I do think is problematic is governance decision to add someone here at board meetings because it is and can be perceived as an intimidation tactic that we're seeing happen across the nation. And I don't think it's appropriate. I don't think we've been given any reason to be fearful. And so I would agree with that. I can support, like I said, the contract, but I do think it's an appropriate time to say that, you know, we weren't part of that governance. And by we, I mean, there were five, not nine. So it wasn't a full board discussion to add those services. So regardless of whether or not it's costing us, you know, $60,000 or $20,000 or whatever part of that portion of increase, the fact of the matter is that was a change, so.
All right, let's get back to any other discussion that would have indirect connection to the motion that's made. Seth, do you have any other comments?
Just like to remind you that all nine of us board members all have different experiences outside of this boardroom.
Any other comments directed to the motion that was made? Ann Marie, please call the roll. Gullikson?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Knutson? Yes, motion passes. The last item on business is a COVID-19 update. I will turn it over to Dr. Gandhi in just a second for the update that he normally would be providing, or that he did provide previously under the superintendent's report. That was a couple of meetings ago. So we all know that we have, are working under the direction, that the administration is working under the direction that the board gave it to follow the guidance of Fargo-Cast Public Health regarding COVID-19 mitigation strategies. So that is how the district is operating. And Dr. Gandhi, go ahead with any items that you feel that you need to provide us with as far as an update.
Thank you. I will start with just the three pieces of information that I have been asked to present in the previous updates. So first was just whether or not there's been any updates from Fargo-Cast Public Health and/or the North Dakota Department of Health. There have not been any updates prior to, at least since the last board meeting, which we have communicated to board members and to the public about a change in mitigation strategies that we need to utilize beginning January. So there have been no changes to that guidance at this time. The second piece is the, just chart about COVID positive cases. And if you'll just bear with me one second, I am trying to connect my laptop to the screen so I can share that information. Oh, I'm sorry. I think I may have inadvertently disconnected. Give me one second. Sorry. One second. So this is the first chart that I've been asked to share. And as you know, what this chart is, is the student positives by school weeks. The colored represents this school year. You'll see the key on the bottom, elementary, middle, and then high school in comparison to the same week last year, which is in the black and grayscale chart. So again, we know that this data is as of right now, and we're in the middle of the week, as it is Tuesday as well. So the previous weeks would be the full indicators in comparison from where we are this year to last year. The other piece of information that was asked to be shared is information regarding our students that have been able to be exempt from quarantine using one of the different mechanisms that we have. So I will zoom in here. This is as of this morning, the distinct number of students, so the unique number of students that have been able to avoid the quarantine requirements that we have in place because of a mask and mask exemption or because of them being vaccinated or having COVID in the last 90 days is 3,762 unique students. That applies to 5,996 cases. Of those students, 489 of those students have been able to use the testing mechanism to test multiple times to continue to stay in school. There have been 173 students that did not have to test. So that could be because of their vaccination status or a mask and mask exemption or something else. And then there's been 114 students, at the time that they were notified as a close contact, they had to test once and then were able to stay in school, or they chose to test once and then to school after that. So total number is 4,538. And then what you have below there is just what I shared at the previous school board meetings. And again, thank you to Stephen Deroe, as you see at the top of my email, for pulling that information for us. So that is what I have shared in the past and what's been asked of me to share during this COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Dr. Gandhi. Any questions for Dr. Gandhi directly related to the information he provided? Okay, Jennifer?
I would like to make a motion. The motion would be to end the, change the administrative policy to mask recommended versus mask required in all school buildings.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Jennifer, you could go ahead.
So last time, a couple of questions were asked or comments were made around really the role of public health and Fargo-Cast Public Health. And we've heard tonight, again, speaking to the conflict that we, the perception, and I believe many of us have acknowledged that even in the beginning of this conversation. So I just wanted to take an opportunity here, part of this, to really, you know, remind us that their role is to ensure an adequate level of public health infrastructure, right? To provide education around early prevention. There's a general welfare clause, right? To ensure sort of access to these early treatment options. And none of this is happening. And so we need to ask ourselves, what is the goal with this, with mask mandates? What is our goal? Is our goal, from what I've heard us say, to reduce or control the spread? To prevent yourself or someone else from getting COVID? Is that the goal of the mandate? Then why are only our children having to be mandated to wear them? And is it working? Is, are the current strategies working? Are those people who get a vaccine actually never going to get COVID? Are they never going to spread it? Even the CDC's own data says they will or they can. So again, if the goal of the mask is to reduce it and the evidence is showing us that it's not accomplishing that, what are we doing? What are we doing? There will no doubt be long-term consequences. Some of us have already seen them from forcing our kids to bear this burden. Putting on a mask makes us feel like we're doing something. It's an emotional attachment. We feel like we're helping or contributing. But the scientific evidence says we're not. We're not. And in fact, we could be making things worse. It isn't responsible. It is not our role, and I've said that time and time again. We are here. are here to discuss academic performance. And we are implementing mandates and taking away the authority from parents to decide whether a medical intervention is right or not. That shouldn't be up to us. That's all I have to say before I vote.
Go ahead. Yeah, thank you. Any other comments? Seth?
I just have a question. You talked about the goals right, right in the beginning of your comments of Fargo-Cast Public Health and then saying that none of this is happening. Can you elaborate on that and give us examples of nothing that's happening that Fargo-Cast Public Health is doing?
In terms of masking, Seth, yes. West Fargo and Fargo, I mean, we have examples, right? If you look at scientific evidence, that's what I was referring to. In terms of masking, it's emotional-based decisions, right? I want it to work, want to will it to work, but there isn't sound science that supports it, that actually shows that it's effective in reducing the spread. There is, there just isn't. And that's, I mean, the evidence is all around us. Look at the variety of policies that are implemented from district to district or business to business or state to state, right? Sorry, not close enough? They're different. They wouldn't be different if the science was clear, right? That is more evidence that this is, this is a motion, an emotionally driven decision, not based in fact. It just isn't. So that's what I'm saying. And so I hope that answers.
I just have one follow-up question and then two.
Go ahead, Seth.
Can you direct me to where the, your scientific data is coming from, that masks are making things worse?
I absolutely can. I'd be happy to send it to you. There are many scientific experts out there that you can follow. Dr. McCullough is one of them. Dr. Malone is another, inventor of the actual technology platform. They're out there and they are desperately trying to educate us as citizens about the dangers of some of these man, mask mandates, vaccine mandates, all of the policies related. Because again, you have to ask yourself, are the policies working? Are fewer people sick this year than last year? Are fewer people dying this year than last year? Fewer people are dying from COVID?
Well, in our schools, fewer cases at this point in time, this year than last year.
That is not, there are fewer cases this year than last year, overall death rates.
I'm saying the, the data that was just shared by Dr. Gandhi, the last two months of data showed that we have less cases in our schools right now than we did a year ago.
Right, but you're saying that that's attributable to the masks? You can't attribute it to the masks.
I wasn't assuming that, I wasn't insinuating that it was to the masks, but you said that cases were more, and I'm pointing out that they're not.
I'm talking nationally. I mean, I guess you're asking me for evidence. So I was speaking, you know, of the evidence, right, not just specific to this school district, but I'm sure we could take a look at, you know, I mean, look at overall rates under 18 and the case rates, you know? I mean, so, so I guess if you're asking me for scientific data, I can, I'd be happy to give that to you.
I would love that. Thank you.
Seth and Jennifer, I see that Nikki and Robin also have their hands up. Nikki, go ahead.
The question that I'd like to answer, when you say, what is our purpose? What is our meaning for doing this? Is to keep our kids in school as safely as possible with our staff as safely as possible. We're in the business of education, and if we can't keep them in school, it's harder to educate them. We know that, that them being present in school is the best that we can do for them. And so that is the purpose behind all of it.
Sorry, I thought you were, I was going to ask you a question back because thank you for adding that. I appreciate it.
Okay, I'm gonna.
I'll go ahead. I'll raise my hand. Go ahead, Robin.
Yes, go ahead, Robin.
Thank you, Rebecca. I want to clarify, I just want to make sure that your motion says end the mask mandate immediately as opposed to January 15th. Do you want immediately on there?
Yes, did I not say that? Sorry. Yes.
No, you didn't. I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
I assumed that was the.
Yes, sorry.
So to.
If I may.
I'd like to facilitate the conversation. I do want to build on to what Nikki said. In addition to academic performance, mental and emotional health, which does tie into academic performance. And we had some guests speak to us today. Mr. Kraft spoke to us quite thoroughly about mental and emotional health, and we had some also additional discussion from Dr. Gandhi and points shared. So it's tied in, mental and emotional health. We know that there were challenges last year. That doesn't mean there aren't any challenges this year, but even more challenges when we weren't able to be in school in person for both mental and emotional health and then tying into learning. So, and, and also the mask mandate that we have for the Fargo School District, as we know, as we're following the guidance from Cast Public Health, is expiring January 17th. That's after we get back from holiday break. And currently, it's not only our children that are being asked, it's not only the students that are being asked to wear a mask, it's all of our staff. So it's not correct to say that it's only the students, it's all of the staff, unless they're, if they're working in a building such as this, when we're talking about in a school building, it's all staff. We've already made an announcement in the district that, again, following the guidance of Cast Public Health, that the mask mandate will be entirely removed January 17th. That doesn't mean a person isn't able to wear one if they want to. They don't have to. Any other questions? David?
I'm so glad that Nikki brought up what she said about that. We've been told many, many times that the reason that we're wearing masks is to keep the kids in school because we all know what a disaster last year was in not having the kids here. And it's been pointed out to me by board members and by administration that all we have to do is look at West Fargo and look at the numbers of days that students are missing over there because of their mask recommendations rather than mandates. I had one person tell me that they've even had to close entire schools over there. So I took the opportunity to call Dr. Rachel Agri, who used to be an administrator in Fargo and is now in charge of the elementary ed in West Fargo, and asked her that. The actual story is that there have been a couple of elementaries that have been affected, and in those elementaries, three or four classrooms have been closed. However, the closure usually lasts one day because they have onsite testing of the students. And if they test negative the next day, they can return to class. The, the parents have the opportunities of keeping the kids out as long as they want. But Dr. Agri told me that they have lost very, very little in-person learning. There's been very, a minimal amount of online time spent. And the consequence is that the kids are in school, they're without masks, and their incidence rates have actually continued to be lower than ours. So I just see no practical reason that we are continuing to mandate masks. Anybody who wants to can certainly wear a mask, staff, students, anybody. And I, and that's great by me, but it should not and never should have been made a requirement of all students.
Any other comments or questions? Anne Marie, please call the roll.
I did, Rebecca. I had another.
Sorry, Anne, Jennifer, go ahead. Didn't see your hand.
Thank you. So in, in regards to a follow-up around fear and, and closures, you know, this is something that also came up on our superintendent conversation with school board members around closures and fear driving our policy. And again, it goes back to my statement around we're letting emotions making our decisions rather than scientific evidence. And so we're allowing organizations that have the power to say we need to close, to, you know, we're allowing that. And we're allowing these policies that aren't based in science, you know, just because we're afraid that we might close down. And, and to David's point, I think, excuse me, that whole story, truth be told, I think even in Chakrapie, the real story there, correct me if I'm wrong, Rebecca, excuse me, is they just extended their holiday, already vacation by one day. So, you know, they make it sound like it's the entire district has closed down. And, and the reality is, I mean, we've, we've even heard Fargo-Cast Public Health say, this is going to be an endemic, something that we live with, right, from year to year. So are we really going to be closing? What about all the data out there that says we did more harm than good by closing? We should be fighting up against that. We should not be afraid of it. We should be fighting up against it. So I guess the last point I would like to make around that is when it comes to, again, ask yourself these important questions. So the last change was, really didn't come from Fargo-Cast Public Health, it came from North Dakota Department of Health, according to Dr. Gandhi. And, and that change said we can remove the mandate after 2:32 PM. So anyone in our buildings after that, including students, whether it's classroom opportunities or sports or, how much sense does that make? Does COVID not happen or spread after 2:32? I mean, it, it just, again, please ask yourself these questions and be able to take yourself seriously when you give yourself the answer. Please, remove the personal feelings that you have about me and vote for the kids.
I have, there are two other folks that have questions or comments here. I'm going to say something. We all have our own strong opinions on this. That's been very evident since the beginning. I trust that everyone here, all of us board members, are making the decisions with the best interest of their kids and the staff of Fargo Schools. I'm not making my decision based on fear. And I'm making my own decisions. I'm making my vote. All of you are making your own votes. It's a, it's a culmination of our votes that drives the decision of the board. I, while we have differences of opinion, we need not criticize each other for having those opinions. We need not say someone is making their decision based on fear. Someone is basing their decision based on emotion. We might not even need to say someone is making their decision based on science. We're all making our decisions based on likely different pieces of information. I am not making my decision based on fear. And I'm not making my decision based on what any other board member here thinks. I value the decision, I value the vote of all of you, even if it's different than mine. Tracy, go ahead.
I'd like to call the question.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. Anne Marie, go ahead.
Roll call on previous question. Holden?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Paulson?
No.
Benson?
No.
Gullikson?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Previous question passed. Go ahead, Anne Marie. So we are voting on the motion now?
Correct.
Thanks for giving me just a second. Johnson?
No.
Nelson?
No.
Newman?
No.
Paulson?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Gullikson?
No.
Holden?
No.
Knutson? No, motion fails. Committee reports? Committee liaison and correspondence reports? I am going to start with Dr. Newman, and we'll work our way around the room. Go ahead, Dr. Newman.
Thank you so much. I believe we have two months to do because we skipped. I did my best. We all attended the Explorer Academy ribbon cutting on November 16th. That was really a neat thing to be a part of and fun to see the, the end results and all the services that this district will now provide. Also, on November 16th, I did a media interview. On November 17th, I attended NDSPA Lunch and Learn in regards to English learners. I attended Grease the Musical at Davies High School. It was highly, highly entertaining. I wish they could have more than four shows. I went to the Discovery Choir Concert on November 30th. And tomorrow, I'm attending the NDSPA Lunch and Learn for Engagement During Difficult Times. I'm looking forward to that one. And then I was asked by North High School to present at their career day for the high school students next month in January. To, I'll be speaking, one, on being a physician in our community, but they also wanted me to speak on being an elected official. So I have a whole little talk I'm going to do about serving on the school board, hopefully to get interest for high school kids. Thanks.
Thanks, Tracy. Seth?
Okay, hopefully I don't forget anything because yeah, it's been a while. On the 15th of November, we had our very first salary commission meeting. It went really well. On the 16th, the next day, I also attended the Explorer Academy ribbon cutting, and the building is awesome. And then immediately after that, I went and saw the North High Orchestra Concert. And I believe just, and then on the 7th of this month, we had our second salary commission meeting. And then the next salary commission meeting will be coming up on the 5th of January. That's it. Thanks.
Jennifer?
Sorry, I actually, I'm trying to think. I left my meetings from last, I forgot about that. I had a long list to share out because there was a community development committee meeting. So I will have to forward that to the next. We did talk, we had a presentation, and I just want to make sure that I hit the highlights because it was really around homelessness and some of the things in the community and partnerships that happened. And clearly, that is something that has increased in terms of our student population here. And so I had some highlights to offer you, but I'll bring it next meeting. And then there was also, we also did a conference follow-up Zoom. So anyway, in terms of current constituent communication, I would, I do wonder, and we have, I think, I believe all of us have received questions around the mobile units at schools. And, and given the circumstances, I understand that that is operational. However, it sort of rises to the level of concern for many. And so I think as a board, that might be a topic that would be considered or I think really fall under that category within our ELs that we are informed of and understanding why we do feel like that is our, our role and how, how that's being justified. So I would like to, to learn more about that. And I'm, I'm guessing that there will be a response or a future conversation. And if there isn't, perhaps there needs to be at governance on that particular topic. So that's it. Thank you.
David?
I have nothing to report at this time.
Jim?
Couple things. First of all, for those on planning, we'll be meeting at 7:30 Friday in this very location. The SEC had a board meeting earlier last week. We finalize the process for the innovation fund grants that are now going to be made available to all the SEC districts by application. And then somebody will be awarded those grants. Had a facility update. Right now, it looks like the SEC will probably be relocating either March or April to our new facility out in South Fargo. And we are scheduled as an REA to have our accreditation visit, I believe, in January. It's going to be remote, zoomed in. So more to come on that. And lastly, I just want to take this opportunity as a board member and on behalf of the entire Fargo Public School community to express my condolences to the Stigman family. I don't know if you're all aware, but Kathy Stigman passed away last week. She was a longtime administrator and principal here in the district. I believe we're prayer services going on as I speak. And her husband, Jerry, was a longtime administrator and principal for us as well. So my thoughts and prayers go out to Jerry and their entire family.
Thank you, Jim. Robin?
On November 30th, I was asked to attend a Sanford event to inform the community about an international nurse recruiting program. The reason that applies to the school district is the majority of the nurses that they have recruited, and I believe, and Missy was there as well. They have already recruited several hundred to start phasing in April. And a good majority of them have students that will attend the Fargo School District. So I appreciated having that information, and they are seeking community's advice on that. Predominantly, a lot of the recruits are from Predominantly, a lot of the recruits are from the Philippines. However, all of the nurses that they are recruiting speak fluent English, but we're not quite sure about the families yet. So I'm sure the district will be able to handle that wonderfully well. This morning, I participated, I, I serve on the Chambers Public Policy Committee. That is a regular meeting. I was also interviewed by the financial audit team that is going through the audit process for the school district, which is an annual process. I visited Lewis and Clark. Their new addition seems to be quite functional. Wanna share a message from the Explorer Academy, because we often talk about all of the people that support our kids, but we also, I consider everybody that helps kids get education educators. So there was some wonderful comments about some, one of the teachers from the Explorer Academy, and without going into detail, they want to express their appreciation for the drivers and aides of Valley Bus. We all know that is a very, a special population that has some extra needs to board and depart the bus. And so our Valley Bus partners are very much appreciated as well. I would like to highlight some comments, because I think that I, that I mentioned in one of our monitor reports today, because I wanna, I wanna have it on, on the radar for different board members in our community. As the Governmental Affairs Committee Chair, I want to bring to the board's attention the challenging, the challenge of providing competitive compensation in today's job market, and as it relates to our taxing limitations. I have sincere and growing concerns about the financial limitations imposed on our school districts from the state legislative level, and how those limits will hamper districts' ability to provide competitive salaries, especially in today's job market. I am referring to the state foundation aid increase, which we received 1% last legislative session. We had to work really hard for that, and we'll continue to fight for that. But also, many are not aware that our state legislature also limits how much we can tax locally without voter approval. So we are somewhat hamstrung as to raising our, our teacher and all of our educators pay. And I, I want everybody to know that we'll continue to work on that. And I wanna put us on alert that unless additional ongoing funding amounts are obtained, we'll be forced to make some very difficult decisions. I have been a longtime advocate for smaller class sizes and our current level of programming. I am quite sure that our students and our community and our employers appreciate the level of education and, and the wide variety of what we do for our students. And we need to start working on this as a community. I know negotiations is tough, and Seth can attest to this. I, I guess, I guess what I wanna say is, we need to continue to fight for smaller class sizes, and that means more educators. And more space, and that's why we have to sometimes move boundaries to keep these class sizes small. But I am a firm believer in that. So Planning Committee, please keep that on your radar. Government Affairs, we'll be discussing it as well. It is not pointing fingers at anybody, but we need to work on it, as a team, to work together to compensate our teachers well. If you, we'll close in saying, there is a fast food restaurant on South University that is paying $17 an hour. That annualizes to about $35 a year. How are we gonna continue to compete with those type of salaries? Right now, we are part, in part of a negotiated agreement, but we need to start working on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Nikki?
Thank you. And before I begin, thank you for the grace to attend my daughter's first band concert ever. She's in sixth grade. And I was thrilled not only to hear her, but what wonderful band instructors we have at Discovery, and I'm sure throughout the district. But it was exciting to, to be a part of that and listen to all the different things those kids are exposed to. So I apologize for being late, but I'm grateful for that opportunity. So thank you. I had my liaison visits, which went extremely well. I am so proud. I met with Beth Olson at Jefferson and Leandra Ostrom for HMR, and spent a great deal of time with each of them, and I'm grateful for it. We have some real successes, some real things to be proud of in those schools. We have some real wins. And I know we have hurts, I know we have needs. But the amazing job that these educators and principals are doing with these kids. I was toured around each of the buildings by students, who were so proud of where they were at, and what they were doing, and what they were learning, that it was just really, really, really a joy to be able to do that. That's one of my favorite parts of our school board responsibilities. So shout out to them. We are, we are ongoing with the recess commission. We have now planned our meetings through the end of January, and we are targeting to have our work complete then. So we'll see if we can meet that goal. We met last week. We meet again tomorrow. FPS Foundation, we met, I believe it was last week. They are doing incredible work, and they are always working on fundraising and supporting a lot of the needs that we have within our district. They're doing a fabulous job. I'm proud to be a part of that. Shout out to Becky and Cory for all that they do with Slim Staff. CEA will be meeting next week. I also attended the Explorer ribbon cutting in November, and I'm planning to attend the Lunch and Learn tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Back to, to me regarding committee reports and liaison assignments. I, I attended the Grease production Sunday, and that was fantastic. In fact, I was able to attend all musicals for all of our high schools. And they're just all great in different ways. From Into the Woods to Guys and Dolls and Grease, we really had a variety going on within the school district. It was fantastic entertainment. Oh my goodness. And we trans, we, we moved through from Into the Woods, where the entire cast and everyone there was performing, wearing masks, to then gradually getting to Guys and Dolls and Grease, where that wasn't required. I don't think it was required for Guys and Dolls. So it was just really interesting to see that, that progression in the talent. And, and today, I happened to be on Facebook, and I saw the, there was a live feed from the Vavachi Davies Choir performing. One of the parents, I think, had a live feed going, and so I got to see at least half of that performance, which was fun. I attended the Native American Commission meeting last week. From that meeting, I learned one, many, many important things, obviously. But on December 21st, it is the honoring and recognition of the homeless persons Memorial Day Memorial Walk. It's usually a walk that takes, it'll take place downtown. It's, it's been lately from Broadway Square to First Lutheran, marching up Broadway and ending at First Lutheran with a memorial service there. Again, recognizing that there are many people in our community that pass away homeless, and that a lot of people don't know about those, about some of the special people that make up our community. So if you're interested, just look for that, that event. It's likely posted on Facebook. And there is some work that is being done between the Native American Education Subcommittee, which I serve on as a result of serving on that commission, and the Indian Ed Committee here within the Fargo School District. Just some discussions about how can we collaborate and, and where can we kind of strengthen, you know? And, and fill in on some of the work that, that needs to be done. And so Tamra Uselman is helping with that discussion. And so I plan to share more in January or February, because there will be meetings with both groups in January and February. December 2nd, I attended the, at the Fargo Dome, there was a Health, Technology and Trades Career Expo, overall for ninth graders with, in local schools. But I understand, at least from talking to a couple of the folks in charge, it's, I, I understand that Fargo Schools sent both ninth and 10th graders to that. I hope I'm correct in, in saying that. I believe it was to help make up for not being able to attend last year. So I learned there that Santa gets from his sleigh to the chimney in, well, let's just say in a way that some of us haven't imagined. So if you operate a crane, you might have, or have seen how a crane operates, you might have another idea on how Santa gets from the sleigh to the chimney. At Eagles Elementary, November 23rd, a group of first graders listened to Ricky White, who is the Fargo Schools Indian Ed Cultural Specialist, give a short presentation, a Native American cultural presentation. And so Eagles is one of my liaison schools as well. So I attended part of that presentation. And then afterwards, Ricky White and I had a one-on-one conversation about some of the work that he's already been doing in the district and, and ideas moving forward. So that is my, that's my report. Our next meeting is January 11th at 5:30 PM. Again, celebrating the fact that we are all in this room together. Happy, Nikki, that you were able to join us. Sorry that Brian wasn't able to be here. We've discussed some very important topics, as we always do. And, you know, let's go forward and do our work in a, in a good way, and celebrate the fact that we have this space together. And happy holidays to everyone. We're adjourned.